I'd like to call the order of the Pleasant Grove City Council in our work session this afternoon on this Tuesday, March the 4th, 2025. And welcome all of our council that's here with us and our public officials and our city administration and and some of our coworkers and the general public, and especially those that are joining us remotely. So now I'll turn the time over for our recognition of our Leadership Academy graduates.
Thank you, Mayor. For some of you, you've heard this same speech 12 times now. This is the 13th. But we are proud to be able to give this same speech with our, what we term our Leadership Academy. Now, what this is, is we take employees and it's about a two-month course where we, we read a book together. The book is called Endurance by Alfred Lansing, about a, back in the 1915, 16 era, a group trying to get to Antarctica to do some special feats and they get iced in, their boat ends up sinking and they have to get back to civilization. No radio contact, nobody knows where they are specifically, and they have to get, find a way back to land. So, we read the book, we talk about the captain of the ship, Ernest Shackleton, and on how he handled his business. We take the leadership principles we learned from that. And, you know, we list them on the board. We have about 20 of them when we're all said and done. And then each employee picks one of the leadership attributes that they want to train on. And then in the course of a few weeks, they take an hour with our group and they train us for an hour on whatever attribute that they pick. For me, this is my 13th Leadership Academy and one of the, my most favorite things that we do here at the city. It's a chance to really get to know employees, but more so, you just appreciate who these people are and really what they, they do for us. I mean, we have some amazing people. The idea is that we want to train anybody in our organization to one day be a leader. You don't necessarily have to have a title in our organization to be a leader, but we, we want to be cognizant of that and help people become more successful in their job. So when they finish the academy, then we present them in front of you and we give them a certificate. So that's what we'll be doing right now. So what I'm gonna do is I'll call them up, I'll hand them their certificate and then they can head back and sit down. I don't think they all want to stand up here. And then maybe when we're done, we'll call them all back up, we'll have them get in front of the dais and we'll do a photo. So, for this, this was our 13th Leadership Academy. I haven't added up, I'm sure we're over 130, 40 employees that have been through the academy, so. And now we have the graduation music. Okay, first up, Scott Beson with Public Works. Sawyer Peacock with the Parks Department. I mean, you miss your graduation? Who misses their graduation? Paul Eddington with our Fire Department. Paul, was it you where we did the activity that we were on the boards? Okay, so, you, you can take a seat, Paul. You don't have to stand up for this, but... Was that you? Okay. I'm gonna say, let me say this. So when they train on this leadership principle, it can be a PowerPoint, it can be an activity or whatever. And so as part of, were you teamwork? Was that your principle? Do you remember what it was?
Yeah.
Sounds, sounds about right, right? So he brings out these boards and they have ropes on them. So, two boards, kind of like skis, and then three ropes. And you had to get three people on the board and you all had to walk together and they had to circle the room. And it was kind of fun as people were struggling at first and then they kind of found their rhythm. But that's the type of thing. I mean, he brought in his own boards and his own rope and he was the one that presented that, so. Nicole? Count them? Count on. And Nicole might have been our first part-timer. Usually we cycle through our full-timers, but she runs PG Cares for us and we thought it'd be good to get her involved in this. From our Recreation Department, Gabby Yusevich, which I don't think she's here. Okay, my understanding is she's ill. We still give her a hand, though. I'm sure she's at home watching this right now online, you know. From the Police Department, Chris Peterson. From Community Development and our New Building Official, Chain Jensen. Yes. From our Admin and the most important person here in the city who does payroll, Bryant Sowards. And in our cemetery, was cemetery, just got hired in our Parks, or in our Public Works Department, Will Westrop. I didn't see, I didn't see Will here, so. That is our graduates, so can you come up, all graduates, bring your certificate with you? We're gonna line you up here in front of the council and we're gonna take a picture. What's that? Now we're on to serious business here. Not that that wasn't serious. Denise is gonna hand out some of the budget information. As always, just keep in mind, I know you guys are seeing this for the very first time, so we can, I can introduce kind of where we're at. If there's some specific questions that you have today about some particular items, we will have department heads here or me and Denise that can answer those questions. Generally speaking, we want you guys to take a couple of weeks to review what's here. And then when we come back on March 18th, we will do this again in our work session where we'll talk about specifics, see if the council wants to move anything or change anything. This is the Administration-Finance Recommendation. So what you have in front of you is what Denise and I have put together. We have what's called the One-Pager, which is, on top says Pleasant Grove City Revenue Uses 2026. Also backing up all of this is our narratives. So for each item or for each budget request, we have some narrative there for you so you can understand specifically what the request is. And then if you have further questions or want more details, more than what's in the narrative, we can have the department head come up. So that's either today, if you want to do some of that today, or for sure in two weeks, if you have some specific questions. So on our, our One-Pager, on the left side of that is just the additional new revenues we see coming into the city budget. As usual, our biggest item is sales tax. Sales tax statewide has been level, I would say, the last year. For us in PG City, because we have added some new businesses, ours is a little bit more than level, which is a good place to be. It's still, I don't know, I think we're, I feel like we're in a pretty good position right now with our sales tax. So we're anticipating about another $345,000 in new money. Keeping in mind that we are kind of looking in the crystal ball the best we can. If the economy takes a turn, then we will be probably having a mid-year budget adjustment and having other discussions on what that means. With our property taxes, our general property tax stays the same unless we change our rate. We're not recommending a rate change for the tax rate this year as staff. But when we get new buildings built in our community, then we do get new property tax revenues off that. So we're estimating that to be about $125,000. We have charges for services and others, so these are other, maybe fees and taxes that we charge in our general fund. So we have what's called a, you know, an electric franchise, is that what we call it? Franchise fee. So we, we have certain utilities that use our right-of-way, we charge them to use our right-of-way. Generally, that's 6% of whatever the bill is. And so when we have growth or if we have, if there's just an increase in what they charge, then we see growth in that as well. So the top left-hand side is just new monies. And then we also, Denise also looks through all of our expenses to see if there's some savings in there. So under the expense review where it says Personnel, Benefits, Operating Line, that's her going line by line in the budget and saying, okay, here's a line item that we haven't been spending the full line item. So this, in essence, frees up money in the general fund. And then we, in the years past, we have been funding the orchestra, PG players, seems like there's one more Arts Commission. Historic Commission, we've been funding them out of the general fund. What we're recommending is to move that into the CARE Fund and have CARE Tax pay for that. And then we also have our $300,000 contribution to Health Center Theater, well, to the Ruth. That is, we've been paying, last year we paid $200,000 out of CARE and $100,000 out of general fund. We're recommending this year to pay all of that out of the CARE Tax, all $300,000. So on the expense side, that saves us $100,000 in general fund revenue. So on the right side, it says Uses, these are the recommendations on, on how this new money would be spent. Full-time wages, that will be an increase of, this would be just current wages. This would be the cost of living plus the merit increase. We have a step and grade system now for Police and Fire, which the step is 2.35%. That's the merit increase. We extend that citywide. So each department head will have, for each employee, 2.35% in merit that they have discretion with. And then they also have the COLA at 2.7%, which, when you add the COLA and the merit, it's 5.05% would be the recommended increase, 5.0. I know it's kind of odd number, but we're, we're just adding those together. And so we take that also and we extend that also to the part-time wages, 5.05%. We are recommending a full-time position. This is, I gotta be careful how I say this because we have some individuals and, well, some individuals, this would be a internal recruitment for Public Relations and Special Events. We already have somebody that's doing our special events. I would like to make that a full-time position with the additional hours going towards our PR, so.
So explain that, so is Lisa still doing the PR?
Yes, this is gonna be a different type of PR. Lisa, Lisa handles like the hard, what I call the hard news. This is gonna be person, somebody's gonna do profiles, they're gonna profile employees.
You're talking in-house?
Yeah.
Type of stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
So is this different than Andy's position?
Okay, so not, so not Public Relations, Internal Relations?
Well, no, this is stuff we're putting on TikTok and Facebook and Instagram and...
Would this be coordinated and handed off to Lisa? I'm, I'm just trying to...
We're trying to understand.
So there's Andy and Lisa, so Andy's over events, Lisa's over social media, so what would this person be?
So I want somebody that's gonna be able to do more for our social media PR-wise.
Well, could we just increase Lisa's hours to do that? Cause, cause, so we'll have...
I mean, we've talked with Lisa about doing this stuff, we don't, we just, well, I, I don't know if it's, it's just...
So is this a third position in addition to what, with Andy and Lisa?
Does this consolidate?
No, it is taking one of those positions and making it full-time instead of part-time. So here's the thing, I can't tell you this is exactly the employee we're gonna do because we have to, if we're gonna fund the position, we have to run an internal recruitment, at least. We can't just say this is going to you.
So would this be like equivalent of a PIO?
Nope.
No?
Nope. They're, the bulk of what they're doing is gonna be special events.
Okay.
What I would like to do...
Just explain special events.
Okay, this is the tree lighting, all the stuff that Ryan used to do for us, she no longer does that. We now have Andy Vinker that does that for us. In a sense, Andy also has excellent skills in PR stuff. You ever looked at what the rec stuff does as far as their Facebook and their, what I would just call PR, positive PR things, she's really good at it.
Tell them the story of, of what's happening in the city.
Yes. So I would like to use that skill, but what I can't tell you is that this is her position. All I can tell you is that I'm, we're requesting that we fund the position, we, we do a recruitment. If it happens to be Andy, cause she's the best qualified, then, and if she's willing, I don't know if she is interested in a full-time position.
I just don't know if that's a third position in addition to the special events?
It's just enhancing the special events position.
So, is she gonna be working with all departments, just the city?
All departments.
Because I know like the library has, dedicates a lot of time, they have a great...
Yeah. Probably not as much with library, but, because they already do their own stuff.
That's the question, is there, is there an ability to consolidate other positions that we're paying for right now so that we aren't duplicative in our spending on what we're trying to accomplish with this position?
I don't think so. I mean, if, if...
Like, do we want to consolidate the library's accounts and social kind of presence with the city? Or are we going to maintain separate?
I would prefer they maintain it separate because they're good at what they do. These are librarians who on the side are doing the PR stuff, but their main function is to be a librarian.
I mean, I, I think, look, we've, we've talked a lot about PR.
Yeah.
That we, we need, we need more of it.
Yeah.
So, we, we can take that offline and, and talk more about what our thoughts are.
I think, I think it'd be appropriate to talk offline. It's hard for me to say this is exactly what's in my head.
Especially...
When...
Especially when you're...
I can't publicly say this is exactly what's in my head.
Well, I get it, I just want to know, yeah, what the description is of the...
What the thought, what the thought was.
Yeah, and the description of the position.
Yeah.
For offering a full-time position.
Yeah.
What, what the full description is and whether or not we're saving money by not paying part-time or contract employees because we're consolidating them into this role? Or are we just adding an additional employee?
Yeah.
And going to maintain the other employees that are currently doing portions of what we're hoping to accomplish with this?
Yeah. So let me come back in two weeks and do a better job of explaining it than I am right now. So if, when I come back in two weeks and if you guys, after I explain it better, or we have some offline discussions about what's in my head and you say, "We don't want that," then that's great. We've, we've got other alternatives as you see as, when, when we look through what's not been funded.
Yeah, if you want, I, what I would be interested in is the money that's outgoing for this kind of service right now.
Yeah.
And then the increase that we're seeking and why we think that that's going to be beneficial.
Yeah, the increase is $60,000.
Cause I think Andy and Lisa are doing a great job, so I'm just confused about, so I just need some more details.
Yeah.
So.
No, that's fair. That's fair. Okay, so, we'll just pause on that one for now. Nothing's final by the time we're done today. I mean, this is the whole purpose of this exercise. We like, by the time we reach May 1st, to be in a solid position, but this gives us two months to work through this. We are recommending two part, well, more than two part-time positions. One Fire Inspector, so that would be helping with some of the fire inspection with some of the development we have going on. We do have Jake Larson, who is our, he's a Battalion Chief. He's also a manager, but he's also our inspector. And so he needs a little help out there, this is a request that they've had.
He also takes care of like solar too, doesn't he?
That's, that's part of the inspections, isn't it? The custodial is for additional personnel to mainly be situated at the Cook Family Park. So we know specifically, when school is out and the weather's nice, we need somebody there pretty much the whole time the park is open to be emptying garbages, picking up trash, just making sure that thing stays clean.
Yep.
And so that is, that's an importance to us as staff and so we're recommending those part-time positions. We also, we did an employee survey last year and asked about particular improvements in the city and one of the feedback we got was potentially having a 401K match for employees. Right now, we don't have one. A lot of cities have them, some don't. We're one of those that happen to not. Some of this request, well, let me say it this way. If, if we have a 401K match, I think that makes us a little bit more competitive, particularly with some of these positions that are a little bit harder for us to recruit. You know, if we can have that as something that the employee can benefit. So it's a 2% match, it's not a ton. But what that is, is if the employee has a 401K, which they can get through the city and they want to put 2% in, up to 2%, they don't have to put in 2, out of their own paycheck, then the city will match that. So our number for that's $139,500. That would be an assumption of 100 and, or sorry, 75% of our employees taking advantage of that. So, we talked to other cities about what their take rate is. Usually when they implement it, it's a little bit lower. But after it's around for a while and people understand that this is a pretty good deal for them with the city helping fund that 401K. But also, it's good for them personally to have additional money for when they retire. That take rate ramps up over time. So that's probably the high end. I don't know if we're gonna get $75,000 right off the start, but that's, that's the budget number we put in.
Addition to that, I, I think I talked to you a wa, a long time ago on this. On the same lines, I call it the Use It or Lose It Vacation Bank.
Uh huh.
Upping that, I, I don't know where we're at with that, it's like 130...
168 hours.
Have we ever considered upping that too, or, what would be the, I'd like to know what the cost would be if we, I know other cities are up over 200, right?
Yeah, so I can just talk on a high level? So, we, this used to be 120 hours, we changed it to 168. I think it was during COVID, because people weren't using their vacation. So we upped it to 168, cause once you have 168 hours banked and you get to the end of the year and you have more than that in your bank, then you, it is use or lose. When I say...
And more than that, you have to keep it as a liability on your book.
And so, when you talk to the finance people, Denise and myself, increasing that is just a further liability to the city.
Yeah.
Cause we gotta pay all that out when they leave.
Yeah. I, 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 I say we keep it at, 160 is a, is a ton.
Well, it, it, I would say for cities, it's probably a little bit under the, the average.
Yep.
Most cities are probably around 240.
Yep.
And, and what happens is you bump that to 240, well, eventually everybody's gonna get up to 240 and then they're gonna be back into a use or lose situation. That's what we saw when we moved it to 168. So if, if council wants to direct us to do that...
I just want to know what the cost would be, I'm just curious.
So there's, there's no cost that would go right on today's budget?
No.
The cost would be when they leave and it depends on how many hours they have banked and how much their wages at that time.
Pros and cons, if we said 168, let's go up to 202. I, I'm just throwing numbers out, 202, 210. Right, what does that mean to the employees, retention, bringing people in, right? It's a little different for, I think, for Police and Fire, or maybe Fire because it's...
Totally, it's totally different in that world.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so you want us to take a look and come back?
You can even talk with me offline, I'm just curious.
Well, no, I mean, if rest of the council wants to see that, then we'll, we'll, we'll put together a pro and con list on what that means for our employees.
I, I had a question about the 401K, so, I mean, you can have certain, certain restrictions on that, like you have to be an employee for six months before you qualify to be part of the program in, in, in the private world.
For sure, for sure.
And, so, do you guys, have, so have you guys explored what that's gonna look like and who would actually qualify?
Yeah, so we have, Denise, did you see that from the, what you polled from other cities?
No, and then Dave and I were discussing that. There's, there's a lot of things we'll have to put together, uh, to, you know...
Yeah, like, so like my firm, we do it, but then if you leave before two years, you lose it.
You lose it, yeah, there's a...
And that helps with retention because then they have an incentive to stay around a while. So that would make a difference in what, what value that has to the city in saying, "Hey, if we have a cliff, so you've got to stay around for a couple of years," then I think that would be beneficial.
Yeah, so a vesting, essentially?
A kind of a vesting schedule and, and, you know, what restrictions you're planning on putting on that.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Cause that would be helpful to encourage people to stick around. Make a note on vacation hours. Okay, we also have our insurance increases, which right now are showing a blank. We found out today our medical was a no increase. I think last year we had no increase too. We've been healthy, relatively healthy. There's always things that are going on, but this is, we've been lucky. So anytime we get a 0% increase on medical is a cause for celebration. Our dental came in pretty high, so we're gonna rebid our dental and so we'll see what that looks like once we get those numbers. So we're working with our broker, GBS, they're handling that for us. The dental is such a small amount, regardless of what happens there, I don't think it's gonna be a super big number for us. We also have our property and liability insurance with Utah Local Government's Trust. They have not given us their number yet. So there'll be, an assumption there'll be an increase there, we don't know how much. When we have a good insurance, insurance here, they'll rebate some of that money back to us. And so, those are still a couple, a couple of missing items that we will have probably for sure by April, when we present this at that time. And then we have our operational increases and that is just requests from the departments for just operational line items that they need more money in. So if you look at the page just behind that, that shows you the detail on that.
You're talking about the one with the green lines?
So, yes, but we have two of them with green lines. This one says Budget Fiscal Year 2026 Operational Supplementary Summary. So if you're on that page, that's the page I'm referring to. If you look on the requested funding on the left and then on the right is the recommended funding. The recommended funding include the positions, plus it includes the operational requests. And so, that's, this is the, the operational specifics. Okay, there's two items on here I'm not sure what to do with. That is the first two items on the list. Miss Pleasant Grove has requested an, an operational increase of $5,000. I think right now they're at $25,000. I think we settled on that number, I want to say about five years ago. They're requesting, through their budget request, $5,000. And then they are also requesting, I think they asked for this last year or the year before, they wanted to implement a teen program.
It was last year.
At, was that last year? At 10 grand, and I think last year we told them no. And so at this point, we're not recommending additional funding as administration. If council feels otherwise, you can let me know and we can put that into play.
Right. So, so we're, you're, so they, they're requesting, they're requesting to go from 25 to 40. Staff is requ, is recommending we don't go to 40.
Yeah, I, my, I guess my recommendation, this is more of a political question than administrative. It's like, do we want to fund these programs or not? The, the...
Well, I think, I mean, the question is, we are funding it. The question is whether we...
Do we want to fund it more?
Is whether we should fund it more.
Well, the Miss Teen Program is just a whole nother program. So yes, that's more, that's, but that's not necessarily enhancing the major, the Miss Pleasant Grove portion. That's what the $5,000 is for. The $10,000 is for just a new program to be implemented. So, like I said, I think last year we said no on the new program. And we, they might have asked for $5,000 last year or two for the operational...
Sorry, so I just want to make sure, so, under Administration, Operational Supplemental Narratives, it says the $5,000, is that in addition to what we're already giving them and the $10,000 as well?
Yes.
So 15, and, and what, what was the number that we're currently allocating?
Is it 25?
So it'd be up to 40?
We're currently giving them 25.
Did you hear anything I just said?
There's a lot of numbers being thrown around.
Todd, she was reading her paperwork.
I really thought I was succinct there.
You did, Todd. So, yeah, I, cause I thought we talked about this last year.
We did, we did, and we told them no last year and they, they've requested again this year.
So, so my question is, we don't get to see the details of the request, right? They're not before us. Do, do they provide like a, like a deck sheet? Or do they, like, do they do a presentation or explain why?
Yeah, that's what's in the narrative.
Oh, that's the narrative?
Yeah. Pageant Director's asking for an additional funding to operational increase to continue running the pageant.
Is there, yeah, but like, like you're saying, is, no, not Todd.
You want to know?
Why am I all flustered today? Steve, there you are. Okay. But do we have more specifics as to why they need the additional $5,000?
So, right now, no, but if you would like for, for us to go back to them and say, "Tell us specifically what's gonna be spent on," I'm sure they'll provide that.
There's, there's no, you know, there's no question that, that...
Costs go up.
I'm assuming the cost is gonna...
There's no question that it, it's done very, very well here in Pleasant Grove.
Kim does a great job.
She does a great job and, and the ones here versus other places are... She does a great job, and, and the ones here versus other places are, are, uh, sign calls. But I would, but I'm with Sid. I'd like to know what the additional funding requirement would be.
Some of it might just be inflationary, but I don't wanna.
Yeah.
Put words in their mouth and, uh, and we'll have, uh, Kim give us a, a breakdown, but I should also, so go ahead Sid.
A one-liner, I mean, cause all the one-liners add up, and now we're at tens of thousands of dollars that we need to sign off on as a council, so I just wanna make sure what we're approving. And sometimes it's more than, for me, like, a one-liner as to what the money's going towards, so I can make sure we're allocating taxpayer money appropriately. So I just.
Yeah.
Need to know exactly what's going on in the operation to ask for the increase. And inflation is, you know, definitely happening and a real thing, and so if that's it, um, I'd probably say no on the teen program. I feel like that could go towards teens at, a scholarship towards athletic programs at the rec center, or the library, or some other things that we could use that would, uh, probably affect more youth in our community. Um, I know there's probably a handful that participate in the teen program. Um, but if, as, if it's costing more to run the Miss Pleasant Grove, I think that's a really positive program for the community. But just at first glance, I'd probably say no to the, the teen program, but I'd be willing to look at the expenses for the Miss Pleasant Grove in general. But I, some of these, I just need more information on.
Yeah, no, that's fair.
Questions, one of the questions I do have, that's a good question, good thought Sid. Um, this is, in order to, to run for Miss Pleasant Grove, uh, you have to be a resident of which cities?
PG and Linden, I think.
Just PG and Linden.
What about Cedar Hills?
I don't, I'm.
I don't know. I don't.
I'm not the pageant professional, so.
I think, I thought it was like a, a, a Pleasant Grove High School.
No.
No.
Linden can run as well.
Linden can participate, but, but if they graduated from PG High. No, I mean, my recollection is, is that Linden, uh, Linden agreed to participate a few years ago in Smolnyon, many in order to make sure they're, they're. But aren't they going to PG High?
I don't know. No, they could.
Go to private or.
They could go to Timpinogus.
Yeah, or they could be a charter school.
So the question, so the question that I have is, what does Linden pay into this?
So I don't, I don't know.
We need to find that out.
So.
Oh, I'd like to find that out.
There's two ways we can tackle this. I can have Kim come in two weeks.
No.
Or just have her write it up, right?
I, I would rather prefer it in writing.
Okay.
Because it can be uncomfortable if she's in person and we, like, I, if she can, like, kinda think it through and do so, cause I don't wanna put her on the spot with questions that we have, and so I'd prefer to have an email or, you know, have her send the specific questions and have her time if she needs to do some research on that. And then any budget questions related to it as far as, you know, how much Linden's donating, where they're at. Because if there's gonna be an increase for us to additional operational expenses, should Linden get an increase as well if they're having participants in the program?
Yeah, that's, that's, uh, that's another good comment.
Well, and I think, uh, last year, if I remember correctly, we were trying, you know, to compete nationally in the Miss Utah, Miss America, whatever. To get, to get a candidate to.
You'd miss Utah and then Miss America.
Yeah, to get a candidate to Miss Utah. Um, we were gonna have to spend a whole lot more money, and we decided at that point that we wanted this to be a very, uh, just a nice community representative. But the prob- the problem is.
More, more community-based, more the thing is.
I am not opposed to giving scholarships to young men and young women who are representing Pleasant Grove beautifully.
I'm not either.
I'm not either.
So.
It, it's, it's hard because it's getting, it's getting to the point though, let's say we go forty grand.
Wait, wait, turn, turn.
Oh, sorry. It's getting to the point where at forty grand, and it's helping one or two or three or four girls, that's getting very expensive.
Well, and it's very expensive for them to run.
Yes, it is.
But that's, but that's their choice, not the taxpayer's choice though.
It's time for us to decide, is this a community scholarship, or is this a Miss?
I'm fine with the money that we're donating right now, but that is their choice to participate, and as a taxpayer, that's going towards.
Well, but to her, but to exactly her point, it's, are we, are we trying to get girls to Miss Utah?
Yeah.
Or, or are we trying to get, get scholarships to Pleasant Grove young, young ladies?
That's what I'm more interested in.
Youth.
Youth. Yes, a youth. That's probably a better one.
And, and I'm, I'm okay looking at this twenty-five thousand and saying, what is, what is the best use of this money if it's a scholarship program?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, a Miss America organization has gotten a little bit, you, you gotta kinda compete in the Miss Utah. And that's not necessarily our.
Well, and very little of, very little of that money actually goes to the scholarship.
That's right.
It's twenty-five hundred bucks is the scholarship.
Yeah.
So I probably need to take a step back here and mention a couple of things before we get too deep into this.
Oh, we're deep.
I, I kind of skipped over on our one-pager. So right now, we're not balanced. We're, we're off by about two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Now, usually when we present at this time of year, we're not balanced in our budget. Um, generally speaking, uh, we're gonna have another month or two of sales tax, uh, revenues, um, coming in. A lot of times we can make that up there. We also have, um, our admin allocation from our enterprise funds to the, uh, general fund. That, uh, new allocation hasn't been done yet. Um, that could be over a hundred thousand dollars. And so we're confident that the two fifty-five eight nineteen is gonna be made up, um, as we look further at our revenues, but this is just where we are today. So we're, we're comfortable presenting with where we are today, but I just want you to know that we're still not quite balanced in that sense. Um, by the time we get to May first, we'll be balanced. That will be when we adopt our tentative budget. So, uh, the next part of this on, uh, Miss PG is, and this is on the capital, and so I, I, we were gonna eventually get to this, but we probably better talk about it now as we're talking through this. So their chassis for the float apparently is done, like it doesn't operate anymore. And so they are, uh, requesting that the city pay for a new chassis, uh, for the float, so they can have.
Where, where's that at on here?
That's on the operational, or sorry, on the capital budget. So where it says budget fiscal year twenty twenty-six capital supplemental summary. On the bottom, where it says other funding sources, it says care. So care's in small letters right here at the bottom of the page. And on the second item, it says Miss Pleasant Grove float chassis. It's a one-time cost. Um, we think about twenty-five thousand dollars. So in essence, you buy a vehicle, you strip down the vehicle and you use the chassis for the float. We're buying a new vehicle. Okay? So this one, we have recommended funding, cause I'm not sure what the alternatives are, which is, we don't have a float. I mean. Did you say have them walk?
Let, let it be said that there just.
I said that wouldn't go over well if you have them walk.
Oh, okay. Thank you for adding that qualifier in there.
We do have chassis. I mean, I, I know we're, 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 uh.
So we're surplusing vehicles.
Surplusing the vehicle today, tonight, I think.
And so if there is, this would be as if we had to go buy a new vehicle. We are right now in process of trying to figure out a way to do this. We want a used vehicle, not so old that it's gonna break down in two more years, but we want something, we're not gonna buy a brand-new car and strip it down.
Yeah, twenty-five grand seems a little expensive for chassis.
Yeah, that was the number that Modern Display gave us. They said, generally speaking, this is what you're gonna, it's gonna cost you to get a chassis. So, but we do.
Actually, for Modern Display, I'm actually surprised that it's only twenty-five thousand.
Yes, actually, for those of us that don't understand.
No, that's not the cost of the float. That's just the chassis.
Yeah.
So anyway, I, I want you to know that in context too, as we're talking about the operational. Um, so, just so I have an understanding of what I've heard from you, is on the five thousand dollars, you need more detail. And you also wanna know what Linden's contribution's gonna be, above and beyond what they already get. So I can have Kim.
Just what they pay now and what they're request, what's being requested.
Yeah, if, if, yeah, did she go to Linden and ask for more money from them? Um, and so we'll, I'll get those two answers. On the, on the Miss Teen Program, it's just an addition of a, right now we have the little junior miss, I think is what they call it. And then the, the high school age and the, uh, young adult age, and then there's this junior space that, uh, I think Kim would like to be able to do.
Can I, can I tell you my personal feeling?
Yeah.
We probably should be funding more of the teen and less of the Miss America. That's my thought. We can talk about that later.
So, does Miss Pleasant Grove pageant pay money to be part of the Miss America circuit? Oh, interesting.
And it's, and it's getting.
I'm not a pageant guy. Never participated.
Can, can we get numbers on how many youth are participating, what it entails, what the money goes towards? Can we get all that information?
Yeah, the breakdown of the twenty-five.
Yeah, and how many are participating?
Yeah. Yeah, we can get that.
Gives a platform, gives a platform. Yeah.
I have so many things I wanna say.
I, yeah.
So can we park that one for now?
Sure, that'd be great. Let's move on.
We'll leave it on the list. Right now it's not being recommended for funding, but as we, uh, talk further, then we can, uh, make that decision, so. I'm just gonna make sure I get my notes. Okay, um, so any other questions on the operational requests? Uh, if you go to the capital request, that's the one that.
I, I just wanted to echo what, you know, Sid said in that, some of these have, you know, a paragraph, but a lot of them are just kinda lean, so maybe I'll reach out to you.
Yeah.
Some of these that I might want additional information.
I mean, the department heads are available to, if you want more detail.
Yeah, and I have the sup- the supplements. I mean, I tried not to call the supplements and.
We told all the department heads that anytime you could be asked on a specific line item, just be prepared to talk about it, so.
Yeah, and you can reach out to me and I can see if I have additional on some of these. I remember when, uh, our new money was twenty-three thousand dollars, by the way.
And our capital was about two hundred thousand.
Our new money was twenty-three thousand.
Yes.
And we were fighting over vacuums.
That was, that was, uh, that was different days, for sure. Okay, on the capital supplementary, we have this broken up into two, uh, phases. Um, we have roughly two million dollars in general fund capital, and we have roughly about a million dollars in, uh, care money. So the care money over time, we're getting eight hundred and some thousand a year. That's generally what we're getting now. Um, we have, uh, over a million dollars in fund balance, or just under a million?
Say that one more time.
We have just under a million dollars in fund balance in care, or just over.
So we're not opposite of that.
Okay, just a little over a million. Uh, so what you're gonna see is reflected in this, um, as far as what we're recommending funding through general fund and what we're, uh, recommending through care. Uh, if everything is funded in here on the care tax, we'll still have about five hundred thousand dollars in fund balance, which is, I think, a good number for us to keep. On the, on the general fund capital, um, two million's our number. Generally speaking, we do leave a little bit, a couple hundred thousand dollars for contingency, uh, for projects that might come open, uh, during the year that are maybe a little bit smaller that we can, that Denise and I can just fund and take care of. If it's a big ticket item, if it's gonna be over a hundred thousand dollars or something, then we'll bring that back to you for a budget amendment. So on this list, uh, I'll just walk through the list. I'm gonna talk about most items on here. The, probably, at least in my mind, this is, this is probably just my preference, would be the Battle Creek Trailhead would be our priority. It's also our, our most expensive project on here. It's a million and a half dollars. To grade that out, um, to put down, uh, curb, gutter, sidewalk, asphalt, make it a nice parking lot. Neil, is there anything else I'm missing as part of the improvements for that? I mean, is generally that's it?
Well, so what would this seven sixty take care of the first year?
So what we're recommending is that we fund it all. We're gonna take seven sixty out of general fund and seven sixty out of care. So if you look down on the care, then we have the Battle Creek Trailhead on that as well. So we go half and half with general fund and care. Um, we also, is, is there any questions about that? I mean, that's just.
So you, so you're talking about trailhead and parking?
Yeah, it's just the parking lot at the trailhead. So we, we just purchased that land. It's now available. If you've been there on a Saturday, it's a mess. We're probably not gonna have a capacity to handle every car there on a Saturday. But at least, in my experience, I've seen people that get blocked in because we don't have lines and we have people just parking wherever and.
So for, for sort of trailhead, are you talking about trail, like?
No, just, just the parking lot. Yeah.
I mean, I'd, I'd, I'd like, uh, do we have an idea of what we're doing there?
Uh, what we're doing?
Yeah, for one point five, what do we get?
You're talking like a visual?
So, uh, we have to grade it?
I just wanna know, I mean, at one point five is a lot of money, so I'm just.
It is a lot of money.
I'm just wondering, like, what does it look like? Is it just graded and we're putting down some road base? Are we getting full asphalt?
No, we're doing full asphalt, curb, gutter, sidewalk, painted, painted parking stalls, like a, a, a true parking lot.
There's a, maybe a picture coming.
Well, it'll take a minute, but. So we, we put together a concept plan for budget. It's not a full design plan, because to get a full design plan, you gotta go survey it, you gotta put in all the effort to design it. So the task was to create a concept plan, and so the, the horse people don't like pavement. So the upper portion, we will leave in a, in a gravel condition because they don't like the, the shoes and all that, but the, the lower section, we had anticipated paving. And then in able, to be able to turn our horse trailer around, you need quite a, a big, uh, area, and then to leave them parked there. So I, I'll try and find our concept plan that we base the budget off of. But you imagine how much retaining wall and, and rocks are needed and how much material needs to move. Um, it's not something that just.
It's just not a matter of buildings fall down.
Yeah.
It's an organ.
Let me work on that while he continues on his list.
Are we upgrading any of the facilities or just kinda the parking area?
That's just for the parking lot.
We, we, we put in restroom.
Yeah, we put new restroom into last year, two years ago.
But do we need curb, gutter and sidewalk since it's a, just a trailhead to the mountain?
Yeah, I'd recommend it. I mean, if we're.
Why is that?
Well, I'm just saying, if we're gonna build a brand-new parking lot and then they step out into dirt, I mean, it'd be nice to have.
I'm just saying, cause that's weather, cause they're just hiking.
The fee, the fee's not gonna be in the curb and gutter though. I mean, the, the cost.
Well, I mean, the curb and gutter is for the handling of water.
Yeah.
The sidewalk to me, it, I, I don't, well, he needs to pull up the concept plan. It's not like there's a ton of sidewalk. But it is, it'd be nice to have sidewalk at least to the bathroom from the parking lot, I think, you know? Okay. That's why I didn't become a surgeon. So. So that's, that's what our estimate reflected, uh, for that low sum of one point five million dollars.
So is there, is there sidewalk at all, or that's just all curb, gutter?
There is no sidewalk around the area. It's just curbed around the edges, and then the area in purple there is not paved.
And you, will you point out where the restroom is?
The restroom is right, right there. So that gives you a little bit of a scale. Uh, right now, people are parking in about this capacity right here. You can actually see a couple of cars underneath the, the asphalt layer that we've put in there. But this, what's challenging is to make this so that you can park a horse trailer there, so we've kinda drawn in, they'd do a figure eight here. And, and again, this is.
That's like, that's, there's a grade there.
Oh, gosh. Yeah, that's, that's why it has to be graded on level.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can see here, there, there's retaining walls in right there.
Well, and that's a, that's a huge elevation change. Like, you gotta drive up there.
I mean, the, the, the estimate includes. We, we would be able to s- get the design and, and include all of what it is once we get further along the line, but you can see, we've got an estimate of a, a million dollars, and then you've got contingency and some construction management that gets you clear up to the, uh, one point five there. But until we get it, until we get it further along, this is a good placeholder to get the ball rolling, and then once we have the money in place, we'll have a better understanding and, and you'll award the project to a contractor, et cetera.
And I, it looks like you're planning on some lighting up there too? Yeah, parking, so, looks like solar lighting.
Yeah, solar lights. There's no power up there, so we would.
There is power there.
Well, probably not enough maybe to, to run all the lights, but, I mean, it's a placeholder for the lighting to be able to. We put the solar lighting up at, uh, Grove Creek as well, and it's, it's served pretty well in that parking lot.
Is there a lot of people that have horses up there then? Is that?
There are, um, and, and there would probably be more if they had somewhere to park as well. It's, it's kind of a rough parking.
I think every time we go hiking, there's a horse trailer up there.
And that, it really.
There was four, no, there was five horse trailers there when I went up Saturday.
And the gravel and the par- horse parking area is, is less money than the paved area. Yeah.
You can connect into the Bonneville Shore Line Trail from there, which is part of the Great Western Trail.
So it's. But I mean, we got a hundred and thirty-three thousand of retaining wall alone. Um, there's, there's just moving material. It's, it's what it costs.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I, 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 I don't know how much you're gonna go, are you gonna go down?
Yeah, I'm gonna go down the list here. If, I'm gonna cover most of these, but if there's one that you wanna talk about, I don't cover, let me know. Uh, the second one on the list is our, uh, we got our. The second one on the list is our, we got our downtown grant that we talked about in our retreat. MAG was kind enough to give us more than what we asked for, so our grant's for 125,000. We do have a match of 9,500, so we've put that in here. And that's gonna be part of our process of what we're gonna do with downtown. I mean, we spent quite a bit of time in our budget, you know, work session with the council a month or so ago.
Did you learn more of the, what it can be used for?
Yeah, generally, MAG is like this, generally, we use this for consultants to come in and help you implement your plans. But I, we need to have some exploratory stuff. They, it's, it's written pretty broad, that we, I think, have some flexibility. I mean, Kyler, do you remember off the top of your head if there was any sort of restrictions on it?
Eric and I had brought up, and I didn't see this on here, the tree rings, it's a safety issue. They're heaving up underneath the trees and putting like, kind of some sort of raised grate around it. But I didn't see that on here. I'd like to get a, a quote for that.
We're, we're, we're funding that. We're just doing that with current money.
Okay.
So we're work, we're working on, we just said bench.
Is that the benches, or what are the benches?
Yeah, the benches around the trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one that we talked about.
Road, downtown park, downtown?
This is Main Street.
The trees, the trees are moved?
No, no, this is, this grant is for a consultant to help us implement our policies and procedures and get our downtown...
And that's like a metal grate around it?
What's that?
It's like a metal grate around it?
Right, Neil, the trees right now have, on the base, there's metal grates around the tree.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. I think we got a little sideways here. So we're talking about a grant for downtown to help with the planning of the future of Main Street, not, not the tree rings and not the grates and stuff, so.
So on that, I, we went many year, many moons ago, we went through the RU DAT, remember? I just don't, we, and we, a lot of good things came out of that, right? I just don't want that to be duplicated from this, if we hire a consultant, because there's already a lot of good ideas that came from that. And a downtown advisory board that came about from that and gave some of your design standards. So there's a lot of groundwork that's already been set.
Yeah, we don't wanna change design standards. I don't think that's our intent. Really, the intent is, how do we motivate business owners to reinvest, and how do we get business owners to make this a vibrant place? Some of the things that we've talked about, that are causing us concern about making our Main Street a place, a destination, in a sense, those are the things I think a consultant can help us with, as we're, because we gotta get the business owners and the property owners in the room, with the city. And we need to sit down and start talking about, what do we want this to be? I think we need the business owners to tell us, what do you want this to be? Because I think we have a vision as a city, and we gotta line that up with what the business owners, the people that actually own the property.
And, and so what would that, the cost would be 9,500 for us?
Yeah, so that's our, it's a 7% match.
So they would tell, so would they be the ones to go speak with the business owners?
I, I think we're all gonna be in the room.
But, oh, all the business owners are there, too?
And the city, and the, and the property owners. Because not, not all business owners own the property. And the property owners are the ones that have to reinvest if they're gonna do something with the property.
I guess I'm just wondering, like, what could we tell them differently than what, like, what would the consultant say that we couldn't say?
This almost sounds like a general plan update.
We don't know yet. Let's, let's move.
Okay.
You're spot on, though.
It's an excellent question, but that's, that's why we bring in people that help us answer those questions.
So I just wanna clarify a question. So are you saying that the full 134,500 would go to consultants?
I don't know the answer to that right now. I don't, so we gotta work within the... When we talked with MAG, in MAG's mind, it's a consultant.
So how do we find that out, though? Do we contact MAG, or how do we get the answer to that?
Yeah, no, yeah, I mean, we're working on that right now.
Scott, real quick, so part of this process is, the original scope that I created in the, in the grant itself, we're gonna have to redo with them. And so that'll kinda give us more information on how a consultant will help us. But it's also gonna be looking at what we have in the books, as far as design standards, walkability, everything that we have going on downtown. And then the consultant will come in, work with us to review those, and then work with our developers, also our business owners, to see, okay, how can we push you towards where the city wants you to be?
It sounds like MAG will give us a broad stroke with this, Pam Bush?
Yes, but it is not for the purchase of the benches or signs.
It's not for capital expense.
This is to create a plan.
Hopefully, to implement a plan.
Yes.
And, and implement.
I want, like, Eric said, RUDAT was done years ago, there was things that were implemented from RUDAT. That's where we started our design standards.
I, I guess I'd just like to know specifically what the grant can do.
Yeah, so we will get, we'll get that to you.
Okay, perfect.
But what I'm saying is, I would recommend we accept the grant. It's 125,000.
Agreed.
We will work with MAG on what that exactly means. I mean, Kyler said it way better than I did. Maybe you should be up here, Kyler, not me. But what he was saying is, we go back to MAG, and we sit down and say, what can we do with this 125? Because when it was written, it was written broad, so that we had flexibility. But part of it is, is we probably need to have a chat with the ba, business owners, so we have an idea of kinda what direction they wanna take this before we go back to MAG and say, this is exactly what we want, when we don't have buy-in from our business, businesses and property owners. So, that's still a work in progress. What you have before you is that it's, there's a $9,000 match if we're gonna accept the 125,000. I recommend we accept the 125. I recommend that we fund the, the match.
So, obviously, I agree with that. But, but, but the question is, I think, if we wrote it broad, then do we wanna go back and narrow it? Or do we wanna just?
We have to narrow it, because they have to approve what we're gonna spend the funds on.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Yeah, I get it.
Yeah. I mean, we don't, it's just not a carte blanche, we do whatever we want. But we wrote it broad to acquire it, okay? We acquired it. Now we go back, and we get a little bit more detail with them. That's all part of the downtown stuff we're working on. I mean, there's a lot of things going on, but to have 125,000 to work with is, that's way better than not having that money, as we do that. Okay, we had a request on marquees. The, the marquee that we did out here by the library was roughly 40,000. We got back to them, they are now 45,000. So that's, it'd be 90,000, or, sorry, 90,000, and then... Then we added money for the electrical.
And so would, would these be similar to the ones out here?
Yeah, it's the exact same design, the exact same design. So right now, I don't have it recommended for funding, because I just want feedback from the council if this is a priority for you. And so I can go down the list, and then we can come back to the marquees, but I just wanna let you know that we did get a number for that. One of the requests that came through is to have permanent posts on Main Street, from Center Street to Second South, so that we could hang lights. So right now, we hang lights, and we're hanging them off trees and things like that. And it looks nice, but it's probably, in the long term, not the most feasible way to do it. So we could put in some poles, and then we can also put, make it so that these poles can have banners on them. And so if we do the poles, buy the banners, buy the lights, right now, our number for that's about 244,000. So that's a capital cost, there could be some operational, well, probably more capital if we're gonna replace the banners. I mean, we'll have theme banners for Christmas, Halloween, those types of things. Once they get worn out or whatever, we're gonna have to buy some more. Or if we get tired of seeing the same design year after year, then we can go back and buy more banners.
And this was just a quote from Black &amp; McDonald?
Yeah, this is Black &amp; McDonald, plus the banner people that we've been talking to.
And we're gonna wanna talk to other people.
Wasn't Black the one that does all our lights throughout the city?
Yeah, Black &amp; McDonald's the electrician that handles our, our posts.
There is a...
No, and I mean, this will go out to bid, if that's what you're saying. They're just giving us a cost estimate.
We've, we've, we've set a road, roadmap for you.
Okay.
We've got a company that wants to work with us.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, so when we get ready to bid it, we just need to make sure that they can jump in on that. I jumped down to rec center roof facilities. Our rec center had a pretty major leak. The roof is, coming up on 20 years old, or sorry, not, yeah, coming up on 20, 18, I think, years old. So this has put a new membrane on there. If you want more technical on that, then I'm gonna have to get Dion or Bill up here to explain it to you. And their narrative, you can read it, if you understand it, then way to go, because I didn't understand a word in that narrative. But that is to, in essence, replace our rec center roof.
The flooring is entrance?
What's that?
The flooring is the entrance?
Is that what we're talking about?
The flooring?
The flooring for the rec.
No, the roof.
I know, I'm moving on.
Please, Eric, will you let me just keep going? We'll get to the flooring, if I'm going too slow.
Well, we, we may not need you to go through all of them, because we have, I mean, we have, we have the data. So that's, I think that's what Eric's saying.
Okay. You, you, okay, let's do this. You ask, you, you ask me what you want information on. Sorry. I didn't wanna waste anybody's time.
I'm good. I mean, the, the detail is pretty good in here.
Yeah, it is. I do have one, before we break, then. Maybe Dion can explain this one. On the Manila Creek walking path retaining wall? I didn't even know we had one. What it, the cost on that?
Yeah, so there's a walking path that goes around Manila Creek Pond, and it's starting to slough in certain areas, and we need to retain it.
Dion will give us.
We don't have a retaining wall. That's what we need. So, in the summer months, when that park is being well-used, the kids will take the sand up next to the asphalt pathway, pull it down, build their sand piles, whatever they do. And the asphalt's giving away and eroding. So what our plan is, is to put a retaining wall along that edge that we can continue to pull the sand up to, but the asphalt will not keep deteriorating back farther. It's at the beach area, yes.
Yeah, we'll recommend that, being out of care tax. Okay?
I, I had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the, the library's asking for 60,000 on furniture?
Yes.
Maybe you could provide some additional...
Jerry, you wanna come up?
Like, updates on the current furniture, what's, what problems they ran into, and...
That's just where I go to get my afternoon nap. I just find a couch in there.
We don't have any couches.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Well, when we did our remodel, it's already been about seven years, it was all with ksl.com furniture.
Used furniture.
Used furniture. So, it's held up well, but there's, there are tables and other things that are just starting to fall apart. Especially the tables that we use for our programs, but the teen tables are, and chairs are looking pretty raggedy. And some of the others are not looking so good either. So just timed up to get some new furniture.
I know we're out of time. One last thing is, Councilmember Rogers sent an email about putting together a business campaign, encouraging people to shop in PG. I don't know, Steve, if we wanna create a little committee or something to kind of explore that, or, or maybe...
I was talking to Eric, yeah, and I mean, for me, it's, it's kinda, we were, we had some good ideas, I think, going back and forth. But like, maybe doing a, a day, and he was mentioning that Eagle Mountain does a day, where they kind of bring only local businesses in to kind of a, a festival to, and they get, you know, a lot of them to come in. I, when I lived in Illinois, a lot of the Midwest towns do what's called a taste of your town.
Oh, yeah.
And they bring in all of the restaurants that are only specific to that town, and then have kind of a walkable... And, and all of the restaurants offer just little tastes of what they, what they give. And where we've got a little bit more of that going on in the city, something like that might be tenable. But I, I would just be in favor of setting some money aside, and then maybe finding some solu, like, coming up with some ways to encourage, with the purpose of it being to encourage helping local businesses, getting their names out there, and people from Pleasant Grove recognizing that staying local helps, helps fund our city, makes it great.
And maybe the full-time public relations, special events person could pull that off.
Well, maybe, I don't know.
That's a good idea.
So, I mean, I think that having money set aside for a business outreach, like, the chamber does a lot of stuff for that. But I think that having the city kind of be a champion of Pleasant Grove businesses can be very helpful.
So, we, we'll put a number on that, Steve, and when we come back in two weeks. I don't think that's gonna be a ton of money to do that.
I can give you a write-up. The others, chambers around the nation do something similar to, to your taste, tasting. So I, I can give you a write-up.
The, the Arts Commission has been doing a taste of during the year. But we could expand that, like, partner with them.
Is this like Costco Sampler, I just walk around and get food?
That's a good...
Kind of.
So in Champaign, where I was, they had buttered corn, and so that was a corn festival, and they had all the local...
So, you can, in other cities that I've been in, you can, you buy a ticket, and then you get like a wristband or something? And then that gives you access to all of the different locations.
Yeah, Salt Lake's done it with some of their celebrations, like Greek Fest and things like that, yeah, where you can, you, yeah, you basically buy something where they punch a hole and say, okay, you've come to this restaurant, got the taste of this restaurant.
Okay, I think we're out of time. We'll bring this back in two weeks in our work session, and we'll just continue the discussion. I got some notes here, requests. We'll put that information together, have it for you when we get back. Thank you.
So, Council, you, you have it, the documents in your hand, go through them, make notes, talk to Scott, talk to the different departments. He'll, he'll get the answers for you. So, in two weeks, we kind of know where everything is in this, and, and be able to save a little time, and hopefully get this narrowed down and approved. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn from our work session. Motion from Councilmember Jensen, second, from Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned till 6 o'clock. Thank you.